You may wanna unmute. Hello, everybody. Good evening. Welcome into the Columbia Planning and Zoning Commission. I'm gonna call the meeting to order. We have. Let's see.
We have Justin.
Ed Madrack is seated for. Alex, who is no longer a member. So we have a vacant position there. Would that be the appropriate protocol?
I think so.
Okay. Otherwise, we have all members present.
Josh, can you, can you unmute the members?
Yes, there's Larry Preston, Rich Napolitano. Tom Courier.
Vera is here.
Bob Powell. Make sure Vera is not muted.
I'm here.
Hi Vera.
Hello.
Thank you, everybody, for being at the meeting. We still have a few members muted that might be by their, oh, okay, I see them opening up.
I can ask to unmute, but I don't think I can actually unmute them. So we're in progress.
All right, it's up to them. Any additions or changes to the agenda, Paula?
None.
Audience of citizens, is there anything anyone would like to bring up to us that's not on our agenda elsewhere?
You skipped minutes.
Oh, I'm sorry. Forgive me. Minutes of June twenty seventh, twenty twenty two. I'll make a motion that we, any, any changes or corrections? I'll make a motion that we accept the minutes as presented. Can I give a second?
Second.
Okay, that would be Justin. Okay, any discussion? All those in favor? I, or raise your hand. Vera?
Aye.
Okay, that's unanimous. Audience of citizens, thank you, Paula, for that. Audience of citizens, if there's anything anyone would like to bring up to us that isn't already on the agenda. Let us indicate by raising your hand or sending a, a notice through Zoom to the meeting. Supervisor. Is there anything? Okay, with that, then, we're going to go into item six, unfinished business, specifically item six point one. The Valley Street Investments. Application for a wedding event facility at seventy nine Cards Mill Road, map twenty lot sixteen per section fifty two point seven point five. So let me just cover a few points before I turn this over to Paula for housekeeping. So there is no public comment. This is a commission discussion only if you're not a seated member of the commission at this meeting and were not seated through the public hearing and you unfortunately are not able to weigh in on our discussions. Just listen in, please. You are members still. I will go over after Paula covers what she's covering. I want to cover some general information about evaluating a special permit application and the regulation that covers this application in particular. But I will do that after Paula Stahl delivers the information that, that she is. One thing I just want to say to Joshua Stern, our, our administrative person, done a very good job of organizing this in a way with links to the online past meeting packets to make it really easy to review all the information we have at our fingertips. And I, and I think you've done a good job, and thank you very much.
Lucky to have him. We're lucky to have him.
Yes, thank you. You really have done a very good job. Paula, I'm gonna hand this to you, and then I'll have you hand it back to me, then we'll open it up for commission discussion.
Okay, I do have a few housekeeping items that I'd like to go through. The regarding the wetlands approval, the Columbia Inland Wetlands Agent Administrative Approval for, for certain proposed activities at seventy nine Cars Mill Road was appealed. On July seventh of two thousand and twenty-two, the Wetlands Commission voted to sustain the administrative approval. The motion carried seven zero zero. At the last meeting, there was a question if final architectural drawings signed by licensed architects are required to be submitted to the PZC. Our town regulation, town zoning regulations state for the architectural plans at section fifty-one two D, architectural plans. If new construction or substantial facade modifications, architectural plans are required to be submitted. Architectural plans may be in preliminary form, but shall include exterior elevation drawings prepared by an architect or other professional license, professional license to practice in the state of Connecticut. Those are the type plans that we received. The, when any application for building that includes a building is approved, in order to receive a building permit, the building inspector would require construction drawings, and those would have to be prepared by the appropriate licensed professional, which can vary. But it has to be the appropriate licensed professional. If the footprint is changed at all after the construction drawings are prepared, then the PZC would need to approve the change. Regarding correspondence, to be entered into the record for a public hearing, correspondence concerning an application must be received prior to the close of the public hearing. The hearing on this application closed on June twenty-seventh. Two emails were received on July sixth and July eleventh after the close of the public hearing and therefore not part of the record. And last, it is the recommendation of the town council that motions will be drafted based on the discussion tonight and be ready for the meeting on, on July twenty-fifth. And that's all I have, Rick.
Thank you. Yeah, to that end, I did want to cover the evaluation criteria that we as a commission can use in analyzing an application as it's been presented and under the specific regulation that permits this application. And I would like to first address, we've had a lot of really impassioned public comment. And we've received a lot of very good information from the public. I think the applicant has done a wonderful job. There's some music on or something in the background. The applicant has done a wonderful job of making a presentation. And I appreciate that. I appreciate the time and effort that went into it. And I appreciate how much this application means to the members of the public, especially the ones nearby where the proposed venue will be. With the certain things that we can consider as part of an application. And that somebody doesn't like the application isn't one of our evaluation criteria as delineated in our, our zoning regulations. There's very specific criteria that we can use to evaluate a permit. And it's, it's laid out in section fifty-two point four. And I have those regulations near me right now. I hope most of you do. Then there's the, the site plan considerations under fifty-one point three. And then ultimately, there's a wedding event venue under fifty-two point seven point five, the specific aspects of the regulation there. The, the town attorney did recommend that we discuss this application this evening. We come to a somewhat of a consensus as to where we're going in terms of approval or disapproval, and that we take the time to very carefully. Yeah, there is some, something on in the background with somebody that appreciate that getting turned off. And I think it's important that we take our time to discuss it and go through the regulations and the application. And craft, come up with a decision and evaluate where we're leaning as a commission. And then we will spend time between now and next meeting to craft to craft a response that's very well thought out. You know, it's always been my feeling that the worst thing that we can do is to craft any sort of motion on the fly during a meeting. I'd like to be very well thought out. There's a lot of interest in this. I want to make sure that we do it. We do the right thing and that we do it in the right manner. So that being said, would it be helpful to the commission to go through the evaluation criteria? Or would you like to go for a round of perspectives on the application? Because what I'd like to do is I'd like to end this part of the meeting with a clear idea where you're leaning and non-committal idea so that we can craft a regulation, like craft, craft a motion that supports the direction that the planning and zoning commission is leaning. If it's a very close vote, I say a margin of one, and it's, that's not a vote, that's the wrong term to use, but there's an indication that, that it would be a narrow margin. There's always a chance that somebody could change their mind between now and the time we take a formal vote in two weeks. And then I would potentially go through drafting a motion on both sides of the issue. So any, and I'd love any of you to weigh in on your perspective on this approach to this. I think it's the most prudent. I would have loved to have been able to address this this evening. But I don't think that we're going to take a formal vote unless you're overwhelmingly in favor of doing that. And, and I hope that we don't do that because I, I think that whatever decision we make has to be extremely well documented and well thought out. And ba- based, based on, on the underlying regulations. That said, would it be helpful to review the special permit evaluation criteria?
I think it would.
Yeah.
Okay, then that said, let me, I'm gonna read the headlines, not the entire content unless I think it's appropriate. For special permit, I'm not going to go through the site plan. Review portion of the regulations, unless, Bob, you feel there's a point that we need to make. I would point out under fifty-one point three, under the site plan evaluations, committee can, commission considerations. It does highlight, I'm gonna go through this very quickly and not delineate which letter that these sections are. Existing and probable future character of the neighborhood where the use is located and compatibility of the proposed use. Location of buildings in, in relation to each other. I'm paraphrasing now so we can get through this quickly. Traffic and pedestrian access and circulation within the site, traffic load or possible circulation problems on existing streets, and the amount, location and access to parking. Adequate provisions for water and sewer, location and type of lighting, landscape and screening, safeguards to protect adjacent property in the neighborhood in general from detriment and all building structures used as equipment or material area readily accessible for fire and police protection. So that's under fifty-one point three. The criteria for a site plan review. The next item to consider is general special permit items. I'm not going to go through the requirements for a special permit. We've had our town staff review as to whether or not we have an application that meets all the requirements. It's my understanding that we all, all of the points that we delineate have been addressed in one way or another. But under fifty-two point four special permit criteria, it addresses whether plan of conservation and development under A. B, purpose of regulations that the proposed activity is consistent with the purpose of the regulations. C, relation of building and uses to surrounding area, size, scale setbacks. D, access that the road or street serving the proposed use and any buildings are adequate, including without limitation in width, grade, alignment, capacity and sightlines to carry prospective traffic that the provision for vehicular access to the lot avoids undue hazards to traffic or pedestrians and undue traffic congestion on any street. And that there will be adequate access for fire protection and other emergency vehicles as services. E, suitable location for use, that the lot on which the use is to be established is of sufficient size and adequate dimension for the nature and intent and intensity of the proposed use and the impact on neighboring properties and residences or the develop, or the development of the district. Item F, appropriate improvements that the design elements of the site and architectural plans are of a character as to harmonize with the neighborhood to accomplish a transition in character between areas of unlike character to protect property values and preserve and enhance the appearance and beauty of the community. That the proposed plans have provided for the conservation of natural features, drainage spaces, basins, the protection of the environment of the area and sustained maintenance of the development. That provision is made for any required screening and buffers with a permanent landscape buffer of evergreens, natural topography, berms, stone walls or other appropriate screening materials. G, nuisance avoidance, that the proposed use and any building or other structure in connection therewith will not create a nuisance such as noise, fumes, odors, bright lights, glare, visual, visual obstructions, vibrations or other nuisance conditions at or beyond the property line. H, long-term viability, that adequate provision is made for the sustained maintenance of the proposed development, including structures, buffers and other improvements. And the last item I want to go over has to do with event, wedding venue facilities. A lot of this is covered somewhat, but I'm gonna go through it. I'm just gonna mention the headlines unless I feel more info is needed. This is under section fifty-two point seven point five of our regulations. A statement of use describe, shall be submitted, describing in detail the nature and scope of the event, whether the facility and maximum number of attendees proposed for the site. Lot size with a minimum lot size of twenty-five acres required attendance, the maximum number per event shall not be shall be two hundred, not including event staff. And the applicant has offered a, a smaller number as a maximum number. Use separation, outdoor event wedding areas and reception building shall be located a minimum of fifty feet from the property line and a minimum, minimum of three hundred feet from any residential building on adjacent properties. Parking areas shall be located a minimum of one hundred feet from the street line and a minimum of one hundred seventy-five feet from any residential building on adjacent properties. Event hours are limited to eleven to eleven, Thursday, Friday, Saturday and Sundays. No events on other days or times, a maximum of fifteen events per year. Health department, the event slash wedding facility shall require approval from the state and or local health department as required. Noise, music for any event or reception shall take place indoors. If a temporary tent is used for the indoor space, it shall be classified as a soundproof tent. Only low-level background music may be allowed outdoors during the ceremony. Music shall not be audible beyond the property boundary. Lighting, the site shall meet the, the lighting standards of section sixty-five point six. Traffic safety, all driveway entrances to the site shall be designed to ensure safety and ease of access to the public street or highway, taking into account grades and line of sight for vehicles entering and or exiting the site. If not located on a state road, at the applicant's expense, a traffic study shall be conducted by a licensed traffic engineer acceptable to the town planner to ensure safe travels between the state road and the facility. On-site parking shall be provided at one space for three attendees plus one space for each staff member or employee. Permanent parking surface shall not be required. Parking is not permitted in the public right of way of the road. The commission may require parking attendance. K, to minimize impact on adjacent property owners, the commission may limit the maximum number of attendees, limit the number of events, limit the event hours and limit the number of events per week or event days. And may require increased setback screening and buffers. Think that covers it. Any questions about the rules in general that apply to this from commission members? I wanted the criteria fresh in our minds as we go into a discussion because we're really by mandate required to address these items and items that are not part of our evaluation criteria. Like the reputation of the person making the application, no matter how positive or no matter whether it's negative, unfortunately can't weigh into our consideration because we're granting potentially a use of the land in perpetuity in this manner that will go beyond us and the applicant. So we have to evaluate the plan as it's proposed and as it applied, it, it is applied under our regulations. So that's our mandate. It's important that we look at this in a way that addresses those considerations. What I'd like at this point, any comments or questions from members of the commission or from, from our, our, from Paula Stahl? It's very quiet. Do each of you have a perspective on what, what direction you're going with, with regard to this application? Would, would you like a chance to talk through? Whatever we do, I want each member who's voting to talk through where they stand, if you're willing, and how you feel about the application, whether it meets our criteria? And if it doesn't, where it doesn't. So in favor or not, and get a perspective on the commission and then figure out where we're going from this, the, from, from, figure out where we aim for likely our next meeting.
Rick, I, I can speak to it if you, if you'd like. I can give you my perspective.
That would be great.
I'll, I'll break the ice. So I, I think, and thank you for the review. I'm looking at the same information in front of me. I think obviously what we need to do is you know, determine whether to approve or not approve the application by the standard of, of the regulations. That's, that's our, our mandate. So I'm not going to repeat everything that Rick said as far as point by point. A lot of it is objective. If we look at the application pieces, they're objective. The application, the applicant either meets the, the individual criteria or they don't. You know, when you look at a little bit more detail, like on fifty-one point three with the commission considerations. Again, going back to the standard or what I, I feel the standard that I'm using is has the applicant met or exceeded the, the, the legal standards to, to have the approval go through. When you look at point A through H, you know, the existing and probable future character of the neighborhood, location of main accessory buildings, you know, so on and so forth. My, my opinion after reviewing everything is that they have at the minimum met the requirements. And in some cases have exceeded the requirements. Obviously, some of it is black and white. If we require twenty-five minimum acres and they're forty-plus, they've exceeded the minimum requirements. If we have certain setbacks and certain distances and they exceed those, then they've exceeded the minimum requirements. And I feel that they, that they have. Prior to the closing of the public hearing, I had the opportunity with the, the owner's permission to walk on the property, which gave me a, a very good sense of the layout and topography. Because I think there, there, there was a lot of questions and a lot of important input from the, from the public, especially around noise and traffic. And then actually that visit was, was very, very helpful because it gave me a sense of the scale of the distances beyond what's written down and what we've talked about. Which it's a large piece of property with the wedding venue where it is was set back. Some of the concerns about noise I shared prior to that visit. It happened to be that during that visit, they were hanging the property by Cards Mill Road with large agricultural machinery. It wasn't small compact tractors. And they were tedding hay at the time. It was about nine thirty, ten o'clock in the morning on a Saturday morning. And it surprised me how little noise there was from this machinery and the work down at the wedding venue site. The other piece of it is, you know, obviously there's concern about the plan of conservation and development. And for about the, the third time in a year, I've read through the plan of conservation and development. And I think that my, my sense is that especially when we look at some of the beginning statements and the considerations of the planning, conservation and development, especially around protection of natural resources and preservation of agriculture. The applicant has expressed a desire to keep the agricultural sense of the property minus the drive and, and the parking, which is relatively small when you look at the size of, of the lot. If there were other uses for that property, whether it's single-family homes or some level of subdivision, I think that agricultural use would either greatly be scaled down or be diminished completely. And I think that that's important as, as well. So I won't take any more time. I, I think, again, after considering everything and going through it and listening and, and genuinely, and I say this genuinely, taking everyone's concerns into consideration and reading every single letter. And but looking at the criteria of the regulation, I, I feel that the, the applicant has met or exceeded the minimum legal requirements to have their application approved. That's my opinion. Rick, I'll leave it there. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. I'm gonna ask somebody to go next, and if not, I'll pick you, unless you don't want to comment at all. Rich, you're unmuted.
Yep.
Rich Napolitano.
I agree with Justin. I did walk the property with Justin on that day. And when you go down there, it, it's a far different experience. And you don't hear anything from around the roads or the hang equipment. So I don't believe the noise would be an issue. And the applicant, I believe, went pretty far out of their way to try and meet all the standards. I totally understand. I move the neighbors. I moved out to Columbia for the same reasons. But, you know, it is what it is. They meet the criteria. You know, I can't add more without repeating what Justin said. So I'm in the same boat.
Thank you. Who's, who's next? Ed, thank you.
Yeah. I'm gonna have to agree with Justin. And my only concern is, is the traffic on the road, but not the volume of traffic. But I would have to say the excessive speed of traffic, because I've been traveling that way when I get a chance now and more than often. And I do notice a lot of vehicles on them roads, forty, fifty miles per hour. So it's, the concern is, is what's gonna happen when I would say the local people who live in the area that cut through there all the time. Is it gonna be an effect with a venue traffic? I mean, I don't know. I can't say that, but it's my only concern. But as in the criterias of him needing all the requirements, I think he needs and exceeds everything. And that's basically all I have to say.
I appreciate that. Thank you very much. Okay. We've got three more than myself. Bob Powell. You need to unmute. Thank you. Hi, Bob.
I, first off, I want to thank the applicant and the audience, audience of citizens for participating in the public hearing. I know Rick did that also, but I really appreciate everyone's input. It's, it's really a, a very good sign of the town, that everyone's involved, everyone wants to know what's going on, and everyone has a say in what goes on. Spent a lot of time reviewing the testimony of the applicant, the comments from the audience, my notes from multiple meetings. And also looking over the planning and zoning regulations that Rick just went over. So, you know, a lot of time has been spent by a lot of people on this, on this process and hopefully the outcome will, will be sufficient for people. So I do have a couple of concerns. One concern is the, what I feel is a negative impact by the proposed project on the characteristics of the neighborhood. The characteristics of the neighborhood and specifically traffic safety. I've been really still concerned about that. Couple of other people have mentioned that as well. I also question the ability of the applicant to contain. Any music or other noises within the property lines. You know, yes, some sound mitigation measures have been proposed for the building, but nothing. During the applicant's presentation was talked about outside noise, people's noise, vehicle noise, equipment noise. Generator noise, mechanical equipment noise, whatever. Nothing nothing was addressed, and I really am concerned about that. Concerned about the potential negative impact on the residential properties by establishing a commercial venture in this particular neighborhood. There's one other thing that I I feel has not been addressed properly by the applicant, and that's the flood zone. There's a discrepancy between the Tolland County flood zone and the New London County flood zone information. The Tolland County flood zone information was established forty years ago in nineteen eighty two. The New London County flood information was established in two thousand eleven, about eleven years ago. There's a big discrepancy between those two. I know we're supposed to take into account Tolland. But directly across the river is New London County in that flood zone, and that has different a different kind of information. Looking on under FEMA, FEMA considers this property. A property that requires flood insurance. I know that this property does flood. There's a history of some flooding on this property. So I think that has not been addressed properly by the applicant. It would potentially change the elevation, grading, locations of things. Um, so I, you know, I I think that's a big concern. Uh, because of these concerns, I'm inclined to vote no on the application.
Okay. Thank you for your comments. Vera or Tom? Would you like to weigh in on this?
Who do you want first?
Vera, you're up. Vera Angler.
Oh, okay. I'm concerned still um. With everything that I mentioned in the minutes of the last meeting. Um, under your our permit criteria, I'm still concerned about the narrow access roadways. With the traffic, with vehicles who are not familiar with the roads, at a late hour, after dark. Perhaps with the drinking or even not drinking. I when you're on a. Street that that you don't know, where there's virtually no shoulder. I mean, there's barely enough. As I stated in the last meeting, barely enough room for two cars to go by one another. And that would be under fifty two point four letter D. I'm concerned about fifty two point four letter F. Of, uh, you know, character to harmonize with the neighborhood. We've heard from so many of the neighbors who are concerned with what they're going to face. What there's gonna happen to their property values, what kind of quality of life? Um, is there gonna be any room for walking on the streets or you're gonna feel safe? There was a gentleman who who came, I believe, from Scalise Drive, who mentioned that he's not gonna feel safe. Putting his kids in the car or driving alone in the evening when they're having an event. This is four days out that that's available for an event, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday. Four days out of somebody's week during a time which is probably most likely. Going to be in the good weather months, when a lot of people do want to spend time outside. And their life is gonna be impacted. A lot of lives are gonna be impacted. Why should they have to change how they use their property that they've been enjoying right along in the safety of their of their families? I'm also concerned on um. Letter G for nuisance avoidance. With the lights coming out of a driveway at hours that are late in the evening. When people are resting or already have their kids to bed or perhaps themselves to bed. I mean. It it puts a lot on the neighbors. It could put a lot, as I stated before. On our zoning enforcement officer, who has very little hours now that we're paying for. That's that's a a consideration. I consider that a nuisance. That somebody's gonna have to be calling in and calling in and complaining, that type of things. Um, whether it be the bright lights, whether it be the noise, whether it just be. You know, a lot more, a lot more traffic on the road or. Just a noise maybe of some generators running if you're gonna have the catering vehicle there, unless you have a low noise generator. Lot of things. Lot of things to be concerned about. So my indication would to be to vote no on this application. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Tom.
How you doing, Rick? Uh, everyone? Um, I just want to say that, you know, I think that. The the applicant has made an excellent presentation. You know, and I I don't have the concerns that some of the other people have in terms of the sound. I just think with just fifteen events a year, I think that they've gone to great lengths to limit that. I'm not, I'm really not as concerned with with the traffic. I think that fifteen events a year with eighty cars or seventy cars. Over the period of time is not. I really kind of, really, to be quite frank, have not. Come to a total total conclusion on how I want to even vote on this. My my main concern is that that zoning. That we have, you know, a commercial enterprise in a RA zone. But the process for the special permit is pretty straightforward and I. The guidelines for that. So I'm glad we're waiting. I hope you can hear me. Um, I seem to have a, the connection up here in the mountains is somewhat not strong.
You're about ninety five to ninety eight percent. You're doing well. So you you're noncommittal at this.
I'm not committal at this point, Rick.
Okay. You have concerns. And I think you need to sort those out.
Yeah, I I'm doing on the RA zone with the commercial enterprise is really my big stumbling block.
Okay.
Would be a nice thing for the town.
That would leave me next, wouldn't it? With that being said. I'm in a similar place as Tom Courier. Um, I think that the applicant has met the vast majority of the criteria and met it well. I have no concern about the noise from the property. Not that I don't think that there's any potential for something to occur at some point in time. That somebody might take exception with, but I think that the the lengths to which the applicant went to address. The noise standards, I'm very comfortable with. That they were willing to move the. Access to the property to avoid. Uh, being directly across the street from another residence that could be affected by headlights, that they're willing to. Um, have a registration system so that the building department knows in advance of every. Uh, and that was volunteered by the applicant knows of every event in advance, and we could establish what the criteria for that would be. This one challenging thing that I don't have a hundred percent perspective on at this moment. Um, it's the width of the road leading in. It's maybe the most narrow road in town, and if not, it's close to it. Ultimately, that to me is the most compelling concern that I have. Because I don't. I I'm not a hundred percent comfortable with the 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 road width. At its most narrow point, especially in lieu of the fact that there are rock out proppings. Um, just outside of the um, the paved road area in a few spots. It effectively makes for almost no shoulder in in some places. Um, that said. I don't think that the volume of traffic as it's proposed is. Going to impact overwhelmingly the um, quality of life in the neighborhood. We're talking fifteen events and seventy cars per event, maybe eighty with staff coming and going. Uh, at various times, so I just don't see a huge concentration of traffic. Over an extended period, so I don't have concerns about the volume of traffic it's creating. I I don't have concerns about it affecting property values. My sole concern is safety of the neighborhood and safety of the attendees. Based on the width of the road. And I. Am. On the fence, to be very blunt. So that would leave us with three in favor. Two against and two people noncommittal, which I had hoped to come to a more refined perspective. And I I can't give you better than what my perspective is at this point. If I were leaning in one direction or another, it would likely be to not approve the application. But I think the application is a great use of the land on many levels. Um, but I'm not committing to not being in favor of the application. I wish, you know, we. We had very compelling testimony from the traffic engineer, uh, but. They were hired with the perspective of providing data that would support the application. It was not an independent. Business, not an independent engineering engineering firm that we hired. Yes, we agreed that they were acceptable, and I don't question their professional integrity in any way whatsoever. But when you go out and hire an expert, you hire the expert that can get the job done for you. I I really want to give the applicant and their representatives credit for a phenomenally well presented application. And a very patient approach, listening to all of the public concerns and agency concerns. So where I am now. I I can't say definitively that I would vote against the application, but I do have concerns about the road width. We have expert testimony saying that the road width is sufficient. Not sure where I would go with this. I wish I could give you more than that. I'm talking to the commission members and the public. Uh, but yeah, I weigh this very seriously. What I I can't take into account, unfortunately. Is if somebody just doesn't like the application or they don't like the use in that area, as long as the. The application meets the criteria of our zoning regulations. The place to address that would have been with a a regulation modification that put different criteria in place. But that, we have the have the regulation, we felt that it was a good idea when we adopted it. Um, and so, you know, where we go with this, I can't say. I will ask our town council. Our our legal representative, Rich Roberts, I will ask him to, after an approval. In each direction, and I think we should think about all that was said. There were some really good points made by commission members at this meeting. And have have a. Draft motion either way, and then think about this for two weeks and then take a vote two weeks from tonight. Does that sound like a plan for everybody on the commission? Anyone have any other thoughts about it? Okay.
I had a question.
Yes, Vera.
People were talking about um agricultural use of the property. I'm not sure, other than leaving the land alone. What other agricultural benefits there were. Or what other type of agricultural use there was proposed. I don't remember hearing anything of.
Yeah. I'm sorry, I don't mean to overtalk you. I believe the applicant spoke to leaving the berry bushes and things. There's limited amounts of agricultural use on the property now. I don't think they had an intention of of eliminating any part of that. Uh, when you, as Justin pointed out, the amount of the property that they actually are going to develop is small in relation to the total acreage. Um, anyone else on the commission have anything else they could weigh in on that recollection from the testimony provided? And that's not a binding thing, you know, that they haven't made that a condition of approval, and I would, if we do approve this, I would not be in favor of. Of putting restrictions on what they have to do going forward, Rich.
He is uh, using it there. Yeah, they're hanging the field now that are up front, so there is some agricultural production going on on the property. And one thing I'd like to talk about with traffic, people who speed are generally the locals. When people that don't know backroads. They generally go slower, just food for thought for everybody to think about.
Okay. You know what? That that's an enforcement issue, just like we have a building department to enforce compliance. If we were to approve this application, to approve compliance with what we approved, and if they deviate, they would have. In any way whatsoever, they would have to come back to us to uh, get approval for any change. In in um, the building plan. Okay, I think. This might be the shortest meeting. On this topic, I I want you to all think about this. We have had a serious application. And we've had serious concerns from the public. The public input was invaluable. And and I I want to commend both sides. You know, this is a process. Ultimately, we have to make our decision by the regulations. That's where we are. So. I'm going to table this issue until our next meeting. Paula, anything you would like to weigh in on?
Um, no, I.
Okay.
The um, when you're asking the the town attorney to to draft. Motions for um, approval and motions for denial with. Um, were you also looking at some of the approval? Would the approval be with any additional criteria that that he should?
Well, anything that's been offered, I I have no additional criteria that I would want to add, but what has been offered as additional. Modifications uh, by the applicant, the reduction in the number of potential attendees. The um, willingness to submit notice to the building department. And I think we could establish a timeframe where that was an effective notification timeframe. Uh, whether or not we need a form, I think it should contain a certain amount of information. So conditions would be. The max number. Um, I would want to delineate that the applicant indicated in a public hearing. That there can be one event per day, so there can't be an event. That's called one event that that flows over to three days, for example. And um, notice to the building department. And we would establish criteria that needed to be disclosed. Can anyone think of any other conditions that the applicant offered that were substantially different from the initial application?
There is one that the, there was a discussion about. Limiting the.
I apologize. I can't have you weigh in on this discussion because you were not a seated member during the public hearing. I apologize.
All right.
I hope somebody else can come up with what Larry was thinking about.
There was discussion about a traffic policeman for the first of the first.
Twenty five events.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. If you think of anything between now and then, now and two weeks from now, let's bring those up as part of that that discussion. But I do think um, we can craft an approval. Motion that contains all of these items and anything else that's brought up to me prior to the meeting, and we can craft. Uh, a motion disapproving based on the input from this evening. I've taken notes of everybody's comments.
Rick, I think, you know, we should try to limit the amount of conditions. Rick, I think, you know, we should try to limit the amount of conditions that we have if it's going to be an approval. It's just, you know, we could go. We could go on and on and on with these things and that, that's not a very clean approval then.
I agree.
Statement of use that is submitted by the applicant, we should go by that. And that should be it.
So you don't feel that we have, have to, well, I don't know in the statement of use that they defined that they would only have one event per day. Uh, uh, an event is one day and there's, it can't cover multiple days. Um, the maximum number of attendees is in, I believe in a modified statement of use, but I would want to verify that. I'll work with Paula Stahl to do that. Um, the, the volunteering of notice to the building department, I would like to add that to a potential approval. Um, motion. And the traffic police five events, I don't believe was in the statement of use that was offered. So we would need to include that, but those are the four items as I'm aware of them now. And if I become aware of anything else that was offered by the applicant, um, we'll make sure that that's incorporated. That makes sense, Bob? Yeah.
Yes.
Anyone else want to weigh in on this? Commission members? Okay. With that said.
I believe Rich Roberts has his hand up.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes. Um, yeah, I mean, I, I just wanted to kind of follow up on what you and Commissioner Powell were saying that I, I think the. The most recent statement of use would be the starting point for any motion of approval. And then we would look at the record to see what, what other. Um. Conditions had been either proposed or agreed to or otherwise discussed so that we could, uh. You know, cover all the bases, but I, I think. You know, I'm pretty clear on what it is that you're looking for, for the next meeting. Um. And that the motions will be tied to evidence in the record from the hearing, not anything else.
Okay. Thank you, Rich.
Sure.
Thank you very much. Uh. Okay, so I'm going to propose that we continue this. Topic to our July twenty-fifth meeting at seven P M. Uh, Paula, I'm assuming that will be a Zoom meeting also.
Uh, yes.
Okay. So that will be a Zoom meeting also, and I appreciate everybody attending to this. So with that, we're going to move on to. New business, anything, Paula?
Nothing.
Okay, regulation revisions. How about if we pass on any discussion on that? I, uh, since our last meeting, Justin and myself have not met again with Paula. We've been working on. Uh, draft changes to the subdivision regulation. So there's really no progress to report. Uh, item nine, communication reports and anything, Paula?
Nothing.
Okay, anything from the commission, open discussion? This is where you can weigh in, Larry, but not about the, the, the topic that we are going to vote on. Anything from?
Well, what I, what I was going to talk about was about the, uh, about, about the application. So I can't say anything.
Yeah, unfortunately. Vera, you had something?
How are you coming on the new forms with the Z E O?
With, with the, the Z E O? Nowhere on developing the form, but, uh, she did submit and I emailed out to all members. Uh, compliance report. I'd ask you to review it and we can talk about it after we take a vote next, next meeting. Um, there's a list of items on there. I do want to have a conversation with the zoning enforcement agent. With regard to some of the issues because I'm not clear from the spreadsheet she sent exactly what the status is.
Well, I know you said you were working on a new, new form.
Well, she was going to.
How to track everything?
Yeah, she sent a spreadsheet that I, I have not interacted with her on it. Um, that's going to have to get pushed down the road at, at least two weeks.
Okay, that was my question.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Commission members? Uh, audience of citizens, is there anything anyone would like to bring up to us that wasn't already covered on our agenda this evening? Joshua, you're looking for any hands that are up?
Not see any hands up.
Carmen has her hand up.
Oh, yes, Carmen Vance. I recognize Carmen Vance.
You have to unmute Carmen.
You, you probably need to unmute on your side, Carmen. Unmute your microphone.
Should be a symbol in the lower left-hand corner.
Is there anyone else? We can get back to Carmen. Once she unmutes. Anyone else have something that they would like to bring up to us?
I'm unmuted.
There you are. Hello, Carmen.
I just had a question. And it goes back to one of the, um. Hearings that was had. And I'm just looking for the veracity of that statement or not. And it was that.
Does it, does this have anything to do with the application that's before us now?
It has to do with the regulation.
Okay.
That the regulation, it was said at the hearing that the regulation was in essence written by the applicant.
Well, that's all public record. You know, if you have questions, contact the, the building office. Um, but it, but this regulation.
I've tried.
Was proposed by a member of the public.
Was it proposed by the applicant?
Uh, I don't remember whether.
The applicant.
Applicant as an individual or it was the LLC that owns this property, but that might be a technical.
The applicant, uh, submitted, uh, an application for, uh, changing our zoning regulations. So it was an application to the board.
Okay.
Okay. Um, any other questions?
Range. I could write the application so that I can then propose the.
Carmen, I, I have to differ with you on that. We have a process in place. We're members of the public. If they want to see a regulation in place and we're not. It's not forthcoming from the commission. They can propose a regulation and then we go through a, a process of public hearing. And review and, uh, any regulation change is typically applying to every zone, every property in a zone. We don't have a way to segment. What, what, where they apply to and where not. We had a whole involved process with the applicant, uh, that. Made the regulation change proposal and we went through public hearings. And, and it's saying that it's strange, I don't think is really. I would hope, hope you don't go down that path. We have a process in place. And the applicant, applicant took the time and effort to understand the process for a member of the public to propose a zoning regulation change. You know, if, if you want, wanted to propose a zoning regulation change that substantially changed the way properties. Are used, it's, it's up to you to propose it and then we would review it and come to a perspective on it. Um, anything else? From members of the public? Okay, assuming no more, uh, uh, questions from the public, we have nothing to go into executive session. I'll make a motion that we adjourn.
Oh, second.
Was that Bob who seconded?
Vera.
Vera, Vera, okay. Uh, uh, all those in favor of adjourning, raise your hand or say aye.
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 That's unanimous? Okay, unanimous vote to adjourn. Thank you, everybody. I appreciate your time.
Right.